I'd like to call the order of the Watkin County Council meeting for August 7, 2019. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Barbara Brenner.
Here.
Red Brown.
Yeah.
Barry Buchanan.
Here.
Tyler Byrd.
Here.
Todd Donovan.
Here.
Carol Frazi.
Here.
Sup Paul Sado.
Here.
Would you all like to rise and join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, a couple of announcements. Please make sure you turn off your cellphone. We threatened to fine someone $20 this morning. He's not here, but this is a reminder. If you'll be handing out paperwork to council members, please give one copy to the clerk for our office files. First up is a set of minutes. These are minutes number 2019-053 to have a motion to approve.
May we do approve?
Second.
Mr. Donovan most approve. Ms. Brenner seconds. Any discussion seeing none in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0. Next up is the Ocean Open Sessions. And the only open session we have tonight is for the open public session. During the open session, audience members can speak to the council on any issue not scheduled for a public hearing tonight, for which there is none. Each speaker should state his or her name for the record and optionally include city of residence. Speakers will be given three minutes to address the council. Council staff will keep track of time limits and inform speakers when they have 30 seconds left to conclude comments. So if you'd like to address the council in the open public session, please line up at the podiums. And please line up at both podiums and be prepared to speak when the person at the other podium has finished. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Greg Erickson. I wanted to come first. I haven't had dinner yet. In case there's a rush, I'd like to get out of here. So I'm from Lake Samish also, so I've seen some of you out there. I have two quick items I'd like to speak on. I'd just like to say, if I can, on the two-stroke motors, is that okay to talk about? I'd like to just leave it the way it is and let them just phase out. I don't think there's enough two-phase motors on the lake anymore to be of a concern. I think if you just let them go away naturally, they will. And the other thing is, I just want to speak briefly on Cherry Point. I was fortunate enough to work at Intalcow Aluminum in Ferndale for 50 years. I just retired a couple, two and a half years ago, and I'm on the retirees committee, and I've been asked to do stuff for the retirees and welfare and social security and different things like that, work on it. And I'd just like you to consider the family wage jobs that could be an opportunity out there. I understand they have to be safe and they have to be environmentally friendly, and I think you guys will work with the unions and the business owners to come up with something like that. It'll make a lot more family wage jobs, a larger tax base for schools. I'm sure you're all aware of that, but I just wanted to make sure that I brought it up. And allow existing industries to get permits so that they can expand and improve and upgrade so they can stay competitive. And that's just my concern, and those are my thoughts, and I'd like you to consider them, so, very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dave Morrow, and I'd just like to speak about the 300-foot safety buffer that was recently enacted on Lake Samish. And really, I understand that there are a number of people that are unhappy about it, and there's some effort to roll it back or reduce it or what have you. But I've invested quite a bit of time in looking at the regulations on other bodies of water throughout the county. And there is a clear, a clear trend that's been established that the smaller the body of water, the greater the regulation that has been placed upon it. So for instance, Lake Watcom at 5,000 acres has a 300-foot safety buffer around the lake's edge. Lake Samish, at 814 acres, one-sixth the size of Lake Watcom, now also has a 300-foot buffer with the new regulations. One could argue the buffer should be still larger, given that it's a smaller lake, but I understand there's pushback on that point, so we won't press it. You can continue on. When you talk about Silver Lake, it goes even further. 10 horsepower engines is the most you can have there. When you talk about Keene and Toad Lake, no gas-powered engines are allowed there. When you talk about Wiser Lake, they limit the time of day a power boat can be out and the quantity of boats, six, that's the maximum. So this, this well-established precedent of creating greater regulation for greater safety and greater protection of personal property has a long history behind it and very solid reasoning. I believe the recent actions of the council with regard to the changes in regulation on Lake Samish are consistent with that precedent and long history. I thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Sable, citizen. Thank you, I appreciate us being able to speak and that you listened to us. I'm here again on water. I think every time you see me now, you go, "Water, it's a water issue she's talking on." And you're right. I attended the August 1, Wyre One Watershed Management Team, expecting only to hear a status on the regional water supply plan. Instead of that, because that's what was in the agenda, they voted to approve it. It had only been modified the night before, only by a meeting between PUD 1 and I believe it was the NUCSEC. So the public never had an opportunity to even see the draft. To me, that is something that the council should be addressing. I'm not really sure who to ask this of. I'm asking you because the board, I don't have an address for them. The people on there are entities from all different government, city, county, et cetera, et cetera. So how do we get the public more involved? That's what I'd like to know on the water issues, especially at the team and the board meetings. You do have a public comment period like this, that's about it. Okay. Now that they've approved it, public didn't have a chance, I did notice, they will allow a staff person, you don't have to have any knowledge, I'm retired, I have administrative experience, you just have to participate in water. I do. So what I would like to know is, how can I get on the staff that is doing the product of coordinating the process and reporting to the Wyre One management team? I could fulfill those duties because it says "any individual," and I will quote, let me find that. Sorry, it's hard to find it when I'm talking to you, but it's saying pretty much any individual could do this. They do have board member staff, but it also can be others, any individual. So if you know how I can get involved in it, I would appreciate it. The other thing that has been happening in the last two months, a man, I believe it's Robert Bystrom with Group Dynamics, has been contacting people about doing an interview, I think with Atul Dishmani. So I'm not clear if this is a PUD organized effort.
30 seconds, please.
Or possibly this man would try to facilitate the water issues. It's not clear to me, but I wondered if the council had been contacted or anybody else about this person's trying to get an understanding, which is admirable, of the water issues and all of the things that are going on and trying to get everybody working together. I personally did not participate because, to me, I wanted the learning session where everybody's together and we all try to learn and do better. So thank you for letting me speak my mind and have a, hopefully it's a short night tonight. Thank you.
Kathy?
Yes.
I, or Ms. Brenner had her hand up first.
Yeah, I had my hand up, my hand. Could you put what you just stated in writing with the person's name and all that? Oh, sorry. I'll find out. I don't know anything about what you're talking about either. And I think we're supposed to know. I think we're supposed to be making these decisions, and we're not, so I'm not happy. Thank you.
Atul reached out to me. I'm not aware of the other individual that you mentioned, but he did, and basically expressed that he was recently elected to the PUD board and wanted to see kind of what the other elected officials that they were interacting with thought about policy in general and direction and have kind of a, get to know you, meet and greet for that standpoint. So I appreciated that we haven't met yet, but I thought it was a nice way to kind of understand what other people are working on as well. The position that you mentioned, is that held currently, and if so, do you know by who?
No, I don't believe so, because this is, they're just in the planning stages. This is the statement of work for, with the pilots for this first part. But yeah, I was interested, and I saw it was kind of wide open.
Tyler, I don't know if you could tell us later if that's a staff-intended position or if it could be a volunteer or what.
Mr. Byrd, maybe we could take this offline because we're in the middle of the open public session.
That's why I said later. Thank you. Thank you, Kathy.
Hi there, I'm back. Hannah Holt, first-name basis now, guys. So my name's Hannah. Okay, so please do not send these proposed changes to the comp plan, to the planning commission. When I go to work every day, I think of all the people I work with as my brothers and sisters. It's exciting for me to get up and go work. I'm more than happy to go. Like, who doesn't love working while getting paid and having fun doing it? Now, I know you guys have heard the same things over and over and over again, and so listening skills have probably dropped down a little bit because who likes to hear repeating things over and over? But it does get hard to explain something seven different times when it's over and over, it's the same vote, same people, same vote, and it's kind of repetitive for all of us. And so the fact that it's like that, it's harder for us to find more to talk about because we have three minutes up here to say what we want to say, facts, opinions. We want you guys to hear the facts, we want you to hear our opinions, like, it's a family to us, it's not just work. So the idea of that, if you guys had three minutes to tell us about all of your guys' votes, how would that make you feel, like, being up there? Why did you vote no? We want to know why. It's not fair that we can't know why. So you guys all run for office at the Watkin County Council as a career because you wanted to help with jobs, the environment, other issues. You guys have many issues coming your way all the time. And now I believe you guys are scared to lose those votes if you change votes. Since you've already approved seven extensions of the moratorium, I mean, seven, holy cow. I think that we need to think more about the votes and not just of what your votes are ultimately, but think about your personal votes and how it's actually changing and why you're voting no or yes. Is there an actual reason why you're voting the no or why you're voting the yes? Obviously, we are going to take the time to talk about this, and we would hope that you guys would think this through and listen to what we are saying. I didn't mean, and I don't mean you guys thinking, is this meeting ever going to end? Because sometimes it gets dragged out, it's okay. But I mean, actually, look at the big picture, look at what's going to happen 10 years from now. You're going to have more homeless people on the street. There's so many of us that are going to lose our jobs, and we have to find a new job. It's not that easy to find a new job, a new career. Some of us have 10 people in a family. We can't afford to work at a smaller place when we can't afford that, when we have 10 people and aren't coming to feed. So that's not going to help with the homeless issue either, losing our jobs ourselves. As there are thousands of us that work in these facilities at Cherry Point, you're not just taking these jobs. You're taking away families, friends, careers, it's their entire life. I spend every day there. I come home, talk about my work. I go to work, talk about my work. I don't know what else to talk about. It's crazy how much hours you can spend. But you guys do really need to think about that with these comp plan changes are introduced to accomplish, who they will affect. In case this doesn't make sense, my name is Hannah Holt. I'm a second-generation laborer, I'm working out at the refineries. My dad and my brother, that's my brother, I am, I are also laborers. I am one of the people that is affected by this also. Thanks, guys.
Good evening, council. My name is William Holt. I'm a proud member of the Laborers Union Local 292. We are here tonight to talk to you about the proposed comp plan amendments that you are intending to send to the planning commissions. Trying to piece together what the council has been trying to put together, we have some questions. The purpose, the proposed draft talks about local carbon offsets. Has anyone investigated how to, how that would work? Is there land available to make that work? Is there, or has there been a study done to confirm this by the county? The council has, the council has, has, the council has just approved, sorry, a seventh extension to the Cherry Point moratorium. Why the rush now to get this language pushed through both labor and the environmental groups? Have asked that you take the time to try and get this language correct. We are not, not there yet and don't feel that the working folks in their plants have even been listed to about how this affects them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I'm back again as well. My name's Todd Taylor, and I'm the business manager for Plumbers and Steamfitters Local 26 of Western Washington. I'm also the executive secretary for the Northwest Washington Building Trades, and it's those members that I'm here speaking on behalf of tonight. As I've stated before, in my position as business manager for the Plumbers and Steamfitters Local 26, I represent approximately 550 active journeymen and apprentices, another 200-plus retirees, most of whom worked their careers in these refineries. As a representative of the Northwest Building Trades, I represent all the construction crafts, which in the Northwest counties is 5,000-plus members and their families, many of whom have worked at these facilities as well. I'm here tonight to ask you on their behalf that the council does not move forward with its proposed changes to the Cherry Point Comp Plan and Zoning Code. I also ask that the council does not forward their proposed changes to the Planning Commission and County Planning and Development for review. There is currently a system of checks and balances in place for public review, and there isn't a need to expand those checks and balances. Expanding on those checks and balances with things like conditional use permit thresholds creates an anti-business environment that stifles growth and jeopardizes the current and future family wage jobs at Cherry Point. Again, on behalf of the members I represent, we ask that the council does not move forward with its proposals as we believe this will drive business away from Cherry Point and cost jobs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you guys tonight. My name is Nick Butler. I'm a member of Local 292. I've spent the last 14 years of my career in and out of Cherry Point refineries, along with my brother and cousins also. I ask you, I ask that you all vote no on tonight's resolution to forward your proposed changes for Cherry Point to the Planning Commission. Laborers are concerned about the proposed Cascadia Law Group code revision recommendations. We are concerned the council is not listening to the concerns of labor regarding the proposed code revisions. Many elements of this proposal are unworkable and exceed county authority. Making most everything at Cherry Point regarding fossil fuels subject to discretionary permitting will prevent the refineries from maintaining operational flexibility and making them less competitive. Less competitive means less jobs. Please vote no on tonight's resolution to move forward your changes for Cherry Point to the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Good evening, council. I'm Alex Ramel with Stand Earth, and I'm here tonight just to express gratitude. If you pass the resolution and advance the package of changes to the Planning Commission, it's not a perfect package, but it's really good. It is a significant improvement over the county's current policies, and the Planning Commission process and the public hearings, both at the beginning and the end of that process, provides a lot of time and a lot of opportunity for the public to continue to weigh in and to continue to improve the draft as it stands. It's not the beginning, it's not the end, but it is the end of the beginning of this process, and it's been a very long beginning. And I want to acknowledge all of the work that all of you have had to do on this, listening. You've had tons of homework, outside reading and learning that all of you have had to do, and I appreciate it, and I want you to know that the public appreciates it, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Trevor Smith, S-M-I-T-H. I live at 705 North State Street here in Bellingham. I'm a proud member of Laborers Local 292, and that's who I'm here representing besides myself. We're here tonight, like a lot of nights, to talk to you about the proposed comp plan amendments that you're intending to send to the Planning Commission. We have very real concerns about the conditional use permit requirements that have been proposed and how they will limit the existing facility's ability to get the permits they will need in the future. It makes no sense to limit the permitting based upon capacity of the facility. We should be encouraging these facilities to grow and process the fuels that we need and will continue to need in the cleanest, safest manners possible. We should also be encouraging these facilities to build the infrastructure they require in their plants to process renewable fuels and feedstocks, not putting more barriers in their ways to keep them from doing that. Once again, we're in a position of feeling like the workers' voices have not been heard, or if they have, that we've been completely cast aside. Despite the very real reality of the situation, which is that if there are any jobs that will be affected by this or by plant closings, we are the ones who will bear that. So please take that into consideration, please do not pass on the comp plan changes. As always, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Trevor.
Evening, council. Another beautiful night in Watkin County. I'm coming here to talk to you about Senate Bill 1406, which was recently passed about sales tax retention and using that for affordable housing. My understanding is that behind the scenes, either staff or you are well-aware of the fact that you need to pass a resolution of intent to activate this and that you're working in conjunction with all seven municipalities, and that I would encourage you to do that as quickly as possible because the deadline is January the 27th, and we don't need to have this getting bogged down, and then you need to have an ordinance passed by July of next year. The sooner that we can start accessing this money and tying it into more affordable housing, the better, because we know that that, the homeless. Flippant about that, but the better that we are funding things and getting things started as possible in my mind is what we need to do. So I encourage you to do that, and I'll be interested in tracking what's going on with that. A response to my union brothers and sisters in the fossil fuel industry, and to you. Jobs have already been destroyed because of the fossil fuel industry. The oceans are acidifying and the fisheries are dying. So I don't hear a whole lot of concern out of the unions at the oil refineries about the fisher folk and the loss of jobs and wages that they have suffered over the last 10 to 20 years because of the fact that those are dying out, partly because of overfishing, but partly also because of what's going on with the carbon dioxide levels. I don't hear a whole lot of concern about other people who lose their jobs because corporations have decided to move their manufacturing plants overseas. Concern is that, yes, we would all like to have a nice living wage job or family wage job or whatever the case may be, but sometimes there are drastic changes that need to be made. Once upon a time, our way of life in this country was.
30 seconds, please.
Threatened by things like the Great Depression and World War II. Now what is threatening us as a species is our way of life, and our way of life needs to change, which means we need to be totally off of fossil fuels as quickly as possible. Thank you.
My name is Joy Gilthillan. I'm with the Restorative Community Coalition, and I have been testifying on behalf of the marginalized communities in this county now for almost 10 years, working on behalf of the jail and prison population, who is extremely marginalized, and they fuel the poverty crisis, the way that we treat people inside the jail business model. They fuel the poverty crisis, the mental health crisis, the homeless crisis, the extreme destruction of the middle class, and the destruction of the free enterprise system in America. If you are listening to the state and federal debates and you're listening to local debates, all candidates are talking about the extreme crisis that we're dealing with in America. It is my opinion, after nine years of doing deep, 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 deep research, like incredible research, into the jail and justice system in Watkin County, we have an incredible opportunity to do something completely different. We have two jails. A jail is not a prison, and to continue to presume, I listened to the debates this afternoon about this, AB 2019-432, and the presumptive bias that you have to do a needs assessment with the goal to pass a tax so that you can build a jail is simply backwards thinking again. This has been going on all the time, and it's our county executive, our sheriff and our prosecutor's office who continue to give advice to you. You are the council. We must allow the marginalized people, the people from the Restorative Community Coalition, the Homes Now people, the people who are working on trauma recovery programs, the people who are doing alternative healing programs, the people who actually have solutions. It's my opinion that if you simply did a public hearing that allowed people who have solutions to talk about them in transparent fashion, you may find that it's not necessary to build another jail. Maybe we can use the downtown jail only for maximum security dangerous holds. Maybe we can use jail number two, which is out on, out in the Division Street at Irongate, for all the pre-entry, the pre-jail, the pre-arrest, the recovery programs, the mental health diversion. New York City just came out today with the big news that they have figured out that to even arrest anyone and put them in the system will absolutely create health problems forever. That's brand-new research that's in the market today. Also in the market today was the fact, or yesterday, was the fact that Denver just removed, the city of Denver just removed the contracts from CoreCivic and Geogroup to provide prison support services to the city. That's worth like 10-plus million dollars. We are on the cusp of transformative change, and you guys are sitting in the catbird seat. I would like to see that you do a public hearing on this resolution before you pass it, and number one, do your needs assessment first, and don't tie it to the fact that you must build a jail. That's backwards. Thank you.
We have one more person who wishes to speak for that in public session. If there's no one else who wishes to come up now, we'll be closing after this, after Ms. Perry.
Carol Perry, Watkin County. I came to talk about water and to say amen to what Kathy said about water, and, but after the testimony that was just given, I feel impelled to talk to you about the jail as well. So two, two things in three minutes is impossible, but I'll try. Maybe about water, what I can say is that Watershed Management Board five-year work plan that they brought to you, hooray that you said you wanted at least your comments. You're the lead agency. You've been left out of it. The public's been left out of it. It's not transparent. The reason that the water issue is so complex is it's not following the law. And I said to you at the surface water meeting, you're the only body that can unravel this More to say on that, but I want to speak to you about the jail as well. It was refreshing this afternoon to see the council united and all of you saying, "We have to do something about this problem." I remember Executive Louse brought in a stack of books of study about the jail. I mean, it was huge. There's been thousands and thousands and thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars invested into the study of the jail. Professionals. I remember when they, they did a search of all the county places they could, they could put the jail. It took months. There was three advisory committees. They all came to the same conclusion, we desperately need a jail. They didn't know how big, and so the professionals said, "Okay, if we don't know how big, let's devise a plan. We'll do it in pods. We'll build small." But all of those, the medical stuff, the beds, if people haven't been in this jail, there's no, there's no place for anything. If I were a nurse, I would not. If I were a nurse, I would not work there. If I was anybody in the jail, I wouldn't work there. It was so refreshing to hear you working together and considering, but you don't have to spend a lot more money.
Thirty seconds, please.
It's, it's been studied to death. In fact, as a citizen, I can remember thinking, this is ridiculous that we would go on these years and years and years. And we'd have had all of those, all of those programs for people and a place to do it and a place for the sheriff to be. And have you been in the sheriff's quarters over here? They don't even have a decent place. So about the water, investigate, see if it's legal, what's being done by the Watershed Management Board and the management team. Thank you.
Looks like we have two more. We'll close after this if no one else comes up.
Good evening, council. My name's Tim Johnson, Public and Government Affairs Director at the Phillips 66 Ferndale Refinery. Thanks for the opportunity to provide comments on AB 2019-358, the resolution forwarding Cascade Law Group's recommendation for Cherry Point UGA comprehensive plan and zoning code amendments. Phillips 66 obtained the copy today of the latest version of the potential code amendments. So we have not had the opportunity to really review the latest version and evaluate that given this kind of whirlwind of revisions that's gone over the last month or so, but we do intend to provide more additional comments on this latest proposal. However, we have expressed many comments and concerns in the past that we still feel hold true. The council's action is inconsistent with the county's overarching comprehensive plan policies for the Cherry Point subarea that recognize the importance of this major industrial area and industrial uses in that area. If the proposed amendments are passed, it will be extremely difficult for our company to obtain permit approvals for future projects at the refinery. It would create permitting risk and uncertainty for future projects and in turn it will restrict our refinery's ability to grow, be flexible in our operations and respond in a very dynamic global energy market. We are concerned that the proposed amendments have requirements that will result in unintended consequences, including for projects that relate to worker safety and renewable energy. The proposed amendments have failed to adequately consider and address issues such as the different and evolving storage needs related to different types of fuels, whether it be marine fuel, jet fuels, renewable fuels. It also fails to consider and address issues like the county's staff resources that will be needed to implement the increased permitting requirements or the undesirable impacts of the draft code forcing less efficient fuel transportation. The council is increasingly at risk of jeopardizing reinvestments in these facilities that are critical to the reliable supply of transportation fuels and other products essential to our modern and evolving economy. So we urge the county to take the time to better understand
Thirty seconds, please.
...the implications of the proposed code amendments. The stakes are too high for the county's economic future to continue on its current path without providing stakeholders and the public with opportunities for meaningful engagement. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and for your consideration of my comments.
Karen Steen, Bellingham. This is the first I hear about what Citizen Gilfillan just spoke so articulately about as far as this resolution. I have followed the jail issue for what, 10, 15 years. I've followed the work of the Restorative Justice Coalition in all its iterations. I am, by the way, I'm speaking in support of a public hearing and many of the specific solutions that, or approaches that Joy has articulated. I'm a retired public health nurse at an advanced degree. Most of my career as a nurse practitioner was in the public health system in Seattle. I worked in the jails. I worked at Monroe Prison. I saw the years go by as the jails filled up as the warehousing of the most needy and dysfunctional of our citizens. I saw the homeless population grow. I saw the jails become holding areas for our social problems. The citizenry of Bellingham have voted twice not to support a new jail. I'm sure there's a reason, but I haven't been able to find why, considering nothing has been approved, that there wasn't something budgeted to at least improve the conditions of the current jail. I, I have to wonder if it's willful neglect. When I voted, sorry, when I voted for the elections just on earlier this week, for the first time in my life, I was able to distinguish candidates who were running for solutions, not politics. The difference is critical as I see it now. Business as usual and politics will continue to be divisive and will continue to warehouse citizens that fall off of the wealth divide. We need solutions. We need innovative grassroots solutions. The public has spoken twice not to support this new jail. And I say, please listen and, and look for innovative solutions. Be a leader, not just more of the same. Thank you.
Okay.
Pam?
Seeing none.
Excuse me. Sorry. Just to let you know, we're spending tens of millions of dollars a year right now trying to upgrade the facility and make it better and that includes everything from emergency lighting to today, we discussed how we could possibly work through the smokeless ventilation. There were different issues with that to evacuation. I mean, the sheriff could tell you a lot more about all the different things that we're doing over there. So we are spending a lot of money. It's just, it's a lot more money. And regardless of what we can spend on that facility, I don't know that we can ever get it to a place where it should be just based off of what it was designed for. Not to say that it can't with creative solutions. I don't know, but I wanted you to know that we are spending a lot of money trying to, to make it better, so.
Okay, I'd actually like to see the, the budget where that is happening because my understanding is there was no budget for jail improvements.
Mr. Bird, can I, can you take this offline?
Could she leave her number for him to get ahold?
Thank you.
Contact.
Yeah, okay, good. Thank you.
All right, with that, we're going to close the public session and move on to finance. Mr. Sedoo.
All right, there we have a Finance and Administrative Services Committee. The next five items, one through five, are the consent agenda and they received 3-0 vote and ISO move for approval.
We move for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes 7-0. Next item up was Natural Resources, Mr. Donovan.
Uh, we, was that the whole consent agenda? We had two items this morning at nine o'clock. The first was the discussion of the ordinance relating to two-stroke engines on Lake Samish and the ordinance that was in the packet was amended to delay that going into effect in, from seven November 19 to November 2020. And that was recommended to the council by a vote of 3-0, I think, yes, as I can remember.
All right, so the amended version was moved for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. It's an ordinance, yeah. Any, any discussion?
I'd be curious about, and I don't know if it's possible, but one of the sheriff's deputies mentioned that because this had been outlawed, or not outlawed, regulated so that it wasn't a use on other lakes, that Lake Samish is getting a higher use of that. And I know that we've had some rough counts about who might have a two-stroke on their property, whether it's used or not, but I don't know if there is a way to kind of count that too, to see what that might look like. Inspections that don't live on there, is there a way for us to tally up in a week how many show up with a two-stroke that meets? I'd like to know the data, but.
Well, you can bring that up. The vote is about delaying the two-stroke part of it.
It's about passing it with a delay.
This, that's not about what we did today.
Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, to clarify, we had a presentation by Steve Hood, an water engineer with Department of Ecology, talking about the, the risks of benzene in the water associated with these older motors. And these are just the motors that are built before 2006. You can't buy them anymore. But we did, the committee's action was to approve the ordinance with an amendment that instead of going to effect this November, going to effect November 2020. That's what came out of committee.
Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
I'm going to abstain.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Carol Frazi?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sedoo?
Yes.
That passes 6-0 with Bird abstaining. Next item up is, this is also from Natural Resources.
Uh, the second item we had in Natural Resources was a proposal to approve the scoping plan for the 2020 shoreline management plan update. And that was, I don't say held in committee, but it was held over and not approved, looking for further guidance on what resources are required to do and no net loss to be able to do an analysis of, of changes that would result in a loss of ecological functions. And we're going to wait and hopefully hear back our first meeting in September on that. So that was the only other item. So that, that was held.
Okay. So then we're back to finance. Mr. Sedoo?
Yes. So the next item is AB 2019-409, request authorization for the county executive to enter into a local agency agreement between Watcom County and Washington State Department of Transportation for the Lummi Island Terminal Preservation Project in the amount of $820,000. This received 3-0 vote in the committee and ISO move for approval.
It's been moved for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0.
The next item is AB 2019-410, request authorization for county executive to enter into a local agency agreement between Watcom County and Washington State Department of Transportation for the Lummi Island breakwater replacement in the amount of $80,000. This also received 3-0 vote in the committee and ISO move for approval.
Been moved for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0.
The next item is AB 2019-416, request authorization for the county executive to enter into a local agency agreement between Watcom County and Washington State Department of Transportation to obligate federal construction funds for Birch Bay Drive and pedestrian facility project in the amount of $1,861,272. This also received 3-0 vote in the committee and ISO move for approval.
It's been moved for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0.
The next item is AB 2019-415, request authorization for county executive to enter into, enter into contract amendment number one to BGC Engineering, Inc., contract for services for Glacier Gallup Creek's alluvial fan restoration feasibility and alternatives study, alternatives analysis in the amount of $163,000. Council acting as Watcom County Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors. This also received 3-0 vote in the committee and ISO move for approval.
Just as a correction, the amount was $163,300.
Oh, sorry. It, it is $163,300.
Any discussion? It's been moved for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0.
The next item is AB 2019-399, ordinance amending ordinance 81-6, which established the Community Development Fund second request. This also received 3-0 vote and ISO move for approval.
Been moved for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Carol Frazi?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sedoo?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
That passes 7-0.
Okay, next item is AB 2019-400, ordinance amending 2019 Watcom County Budget Request Number 10 in the amount of $2,650,000. And this also received 3-0 vote in the committee and ISO move for approval.
It's been moved for approval. Any discussion? Mr. Bird?
Yeah, I wanted to say I actually really like this and this is item number eight on our list, but it's also item number 11 and 12, or item number 11 and 13.
Yeah. 11.
Oftentimes I disagree with how our economic development funds are being used because I don't feel like they're used to create jobs really efficiently, but in this case, I think that the city of Blaine has found a way to remove barriers that could actually and will actually have a pretty drastic impact and they've already started moving down that road and identified a number of employers that will come into the area or expand by leveraging this, these funds and will also pay back a portion of these funds as well. And so I, I think this is a great kind of project to showcase as far as how we can spend some of those economic development dollars to, to generate jobs here in our local economy. So he was here earlier. Oh, there he is. Thanks for bringing this forward.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Carol Frazi?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sedoo?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
That passes 7-0.
The next item is AB 2019-406, request authorization for county executive to enter into a contract between Watcom County and Bellingham Fire Department for community paramedic services in the amount of $321,055. This also received 3-0 vote in the committee, ISO move for approval.
It's been moved for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0.
The next item is AB 2019-413, request authorization for county executive to enter into an inter-local agreement between Watcom County and Washington State Department of Ecology for operation of moderate-risk waste facilities in the amount of $196,103.50. And this also received 3-0 vote in the committee and ISO move for approval.
Been moved for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0.
The next item is AB 2019-423, request authorization for county executive to enter into an inter-local loan and grant agreement between Watcom County and city of Blaine in the amount of $2,650,000. And this also received 3-0 vote in the committee and ISO move for approval.
It's been moved for approval. Any discussion, Mr. Donovan?
Just sort of following up on what Mr. Bird said, that we're not, as, as great as we might think this proposal is, we're not funding 2.6 million three times. It's, it goes through a budget request and then an inter-local loan agreement and then the loan authorization. So it'll happen again. It's just all the same thing.
Yes.
It gets confusing.
Government is the most efficient. Further discussion?
I'd prove it one more time after this.
Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0 for the second time.
The next item is AB 2019-426, request authorization for the county executive to enter into a contract between Watcom County and Fire District Number 7 to provide mobile,[1739.54][1739.57]integrated health services through the Community Paramedic Services Program in the amount of $407,130. This also received 3-0 vote in the committee and ISO move for approval.
Been moved for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0.
The next item is AB 2019-421, request approval of the Economic Development Investment Board's recommendation for funding the city of Blaine's request for a loan in the amount of $1,766,666 and a grant amount of $883,333. And this also received 3-0 approval in the committee and ISO move for approval.
It's been moved for, it's been moved for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes for the third time.
Okay. The next item is AB 2019-422, request approval of the Economic Development Investment EDI Board's recommendation for funding of Bellingham Housing Authority's request for a loan in the amount of $600,275. This also received three zero vote in the committee and I so move for approval.
Been moved for approval. Any discussion? Byrd, is that your hand? Yep.
Yeah, I said this earlier in committee, but I'll say it again. I'm going to vote yes on this because I really do think that we need more affordable housing and it's a serious issue, especially after the Business Journal came out and said our medium house price is now $500,000 or more in the city of Bellingham. This is obviously going to help us with that. But I'd much, I would love to see us tackle this instead of spending money in tax dollars, but address it in a way where we're addressing it through regulation and the cost of permitting and the amount of time it takes to permit issues. Because I think that would be more sustainable for us in the long run. The other thing I really don't like about it is I'm just never a big fan of government having the newest, most beautiful office space in the best location. The, I think the building looks great and I'd much rather see some nice retail and restaurants in that facility than HUD's new office space. Even if they are paying for it out of their budget, it's still tax dollars. And yeah.
Further discussion, Mr. Donovan?
It is, in context, this is the project that's going to be up on Samish Way where the old Aloha Motel is. It's a $22.6 million project, mostly funded with private equity. And I agree, it's necessary and it's good. But just to have it in the scale of, you know, like to build, what is it, 67 units or something? That's, that's the bigger picture of it. But I think we were told that the second phase of this would have more commercial stuff as well as the office space. So it's a good project. But we're just making a little kind of dent in total cost of it.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes seven zero.
Okay. Well, that's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Sidoo.
One more item. I've been waiting the whole time for Barbara to do this, but I feel like she's not, so.
Oh, come on, let me do my thing. I'm chair of the Public Works.
Barbara always says, hey, you know, we didn't ask a bunch of questions and we ran through this because we addressed this earlier in committee meetings, so.
Long day.
It was a long day, but please know that we're not just voting yes on everything tonight that's in front of us. We have talked about it all day long. So that's usually your saying.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the next, okay, the first item, a resolution acknowledging receipt of a citizen petition to form a no shooting zone in the Drayton Harbor area of Watcom County was pulled because the person didn't have enough signatures. The second item is another resolution establishing the council's intent to conduct a hearing on a proposal to create a no shooting zone in Drayton Harbor as requested by the city of Blaine. We had a, I won't say heated discussion, but very interesting, very interesting discussion on this. And we voted three zero to, to accept this resolution, to set this up, to move forward. This is not a decision, this is moving forward. And I just want to say, I hope everybody keeps a very open mind and that this doesn't turn into be an anti-gun legislation.
Okay. So you're moving it?
I did. Three zero.
Three zero. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Mr. Bird?
Yeah. Is the intention then to write an ordinance or to approve theirs at this hearing?
Depends.
So is this, what is the intention of this exactly? Because we're not.
Is it like an introduction item?
Take testimony.
We're going to have a hearing.
Yeah.
I will prepare an ordinance and then the council will have a public hearing on that to give people a chance to come and tell you whether they're for or against the no shooting zone.
I'm going to vote no on this because earlier today in the committee meeting, one of the gentlemen came up and again, he gave us a breakdown what regulatory issues you should have. And one of them was that you shouldn't be creating this if it's a noise issue. You're not supposed to be creating this if it's a hunting issue. It needs to be a safety issue. And then there was a few others in regards to that. There were some requirements about having specific safety statistics showing that there was issues involved. And in talking with the individuals from the city of Blaine, the new police chief and a couple others, as far as everyone can tell me, there has yet to be a single issue out there where we've dispatched somebody at this point because of a life safety issue or a shooting issue or anything else. There's a 200-foot buffer in place right now. And these are shotguns are the only thing allowed out there. Not shotguns with bullets, not shotguns with slugs, shotguns with pellets for duck hunting that will travel 60 yards further. But I mean, that's kind of the lethal range. So the buffer is significantly more than that. I would be open to listening to this because I'm open to listening to both sides of anything. But what I really want to see is the data behind it first. So that's, if we could get that, then I'd be happy to hear this. But I want to hear that or I'd like to see that data. So it's not subjective, but more of an objective conversation.
Well, you brought that up in committee and that is information that some of us will be getting. I mean, I hope all of us get it. And that's why I want to make sure that this ends up being based on legitimate concerns. And that's how we do, you bring it forward as a hearing. And that's when a lot of your, you know, if you want to take your time now and contact some of those people who are here to get more information. But it's not, you don't say no because you're not sure you want it.
Man, I agree with you. When do you guys ever see this happen?
What?
Us having a conversation back and forth there. No, I did, I agree with you. The only, I mean, if it was just a listening session, that I'd be absolutely for that. My concern though is based on my personal experience that if we have an ordinance, that we're going to pass the ordinance regardless of what's said. And so if we were just going to say, hey, we want to have a conversation about it and see what people have to say, that's one thing. But if we're going to say, we have something we want to introduce that's going to ban it, then I don't want to give that foothold to like, we're just going to do it regardless of what people say. That's my concern, if that makes sense.
I don't consider this a foothold. And I was very impressed by the police chief of Blaine. He's going to be getting together with the people who have concerns, who are legitimate hunters. And I do not want it to be something that just stops, you know, legitimate waterfowl hunting in Watcom County. So, but it's not about, that's what this whole process will be about. That's why I, you know, just like you don't want it to be for someone having a bias, I think it's important that we get everything out in the open so everybody can decide. That's all.
I liked him too, especially his nicknameed Tank. I thought that was a thumbs up.
You're making me have to, you know, I'm not defending any of this stuff. I'm just saying this is where we do it.
Policy by nicknames. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That passes six to one with Byrd opposed. Next item up, Ms. Brenner.
Oh, yeah. Let's see. Amendments to the Coordinated Water Supply Plan Addressing Timely Reasonable and Transparency. And I wasn't going to support this because I think it really doesn't tell us a whole lot of anything. But it does tell us a little bit and we can do more. So I'm going to hold my nose and vote for it. But I'm not happy with all the time that was spent on this and how little it answered.
Is that a motion?
That's a, yeah, a motion.
And what was the, what was the vote in the committee?
Three zero. It was going to be two one, but somebody talked me into that we'd have more time to work on this. He did. It was his fault.
It's been moved for approval. Any discussion, Mr. Bird?
No finger pointing. The, you know, I want to say our staff worked really hard on this. And I gave them a hard time throughout the process in the last over year as they worked on this. But they did do a good job working on this. And it was a difficult topic. I'm really disappointed in our water associations and our water districts. My, my feelings about it go far beyond disappointment. And the fact that I really don't think that they've done anything right by the people that they are elected and hired to serve. I can't wait to find a way for us to be able to work on this as a council and maybe find solutions for that ourselves. Because it's obviously apparent that they don't have an interest in regulating themselves and giving kind of fair ground and fair say to their homeowners. This is marginally better, marginally, barely, not even really, but a little bit. And so that's why I talked or advocated on its behalf. But they could have been, they could have done so much better than this. A year plus, and they could have done so much better than this. And so, yeah. I hope you guys are watching.
I just want to say, I hope nobody took my comments as saying anything negative about what staff did. I was very impressed with what they tried to do.
Further discussion, Ms. Frazi?
I just wanted to say they did, the staff did everything they could legally and that's the limits.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes seven zero. Ms. Brenner?
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, that's not my name.
Mr. Buchanan?
Yes, this is from the Council Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee. And this is AB 2019-432. It's a resolution adopting a statement of public health, safety and justice facility planning principles for Watcom County. This is a, a planning document. It lists the kinds of principles we want to consider as we're moving forward. And then it has an accompanying memo that is a, just a framework at this point of a work plan. There's going to be a lot of time for public input along the way. We're scheduling other listening sessions. We're scheduling a lot of, a lot of, of opportunity for public input. The committee recommended this approval, three to zero, and I so move.
Been moved for approval? Any discussion, Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, I had just a couple amendments that are just stylistic things. So on the memo, which is in page 556, that accompanies the resolution point five.
It's in our packet.
Five, five, six.
Five, five, six.
Number five, I think it's meant to say, we will continue to look, rather than with continue. I propose that as a change. There was one other.
I'm going to need you to.
Page 556.
What number?
Number five.
Yep.
So it begins with continue to look towards. I think it's meant to say, we will continue to look towards.
Very good.
So, and then on number nine, it says, or expand to include a crisis triage facility. So as if, do you mean that we've already, I think we want to like make it sound like we've already done that. So we.
Yeah, yeah, this was, this was a residual from the 2016, so.
Just getting that, you know, we will consider the Iron Gate Minimum Security Facility is a valuable piece of the criminal justice continuum. This facility could be retained for certain existing jail population programs or expanded to include a larger, I mean, because we already, we've already built the second. Either just delete the part about the crisis triage facility because it's already been done, or because I think there has been discussion about expanding the current small one that's there.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Just, I'm looking for, but anyway, just what's the best way to update that to get it current?
Larger?
Do I need a motion from someone?
I move that we say, where it currently says on number nine, or expand to include a crisis triage facility, I guess to say, or expanded to include additional crisis triage facility. I mean, it's in a list of options of what we might do there. Just.
Is that additional, do you include additional crisis?
Include additional crisis triage facility or facilities. I think that was it.
So you've made two changes. Do I have a second for those?
The others just scriveners.
Okay, a second.
Mr. Bird, second. Ms. Brenner, you had your hand up.
Yeah, just on that center, you know, facilities, I think we just should say expand crisis triage operations. Because they, you know, the state and feds may change their mind and say, you know, we don't have to have only so many in this place and so many in that, which is very inefficient.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I am too.
That's good.
What is your, what is it now?
It would just be that we would.
And to include crisis triage operations.
Operations, expanded, right, yeah.
Replacing the word facility with operations.
Yeah, just replace facility with operations.
Delete the word A.
Yep.
Yeah, take A.
That's it.
Madam Clerk, are you clear on the motion? Thank you. Okay. Further discussion on the motion to amend? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to amend, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion to amend passes seven zero. Now we're back to the main motion. Any further discussion on the main motion, Ms. Brenner?
I just want to say thank you so much to Councilmember Buchanan and to Sheriff Bill Elfo for all the work you guys have been doing on this. I am so impressed with this. And if there was ever, you know, an effort that is going to bring people together, this is going to be it. I just thank you very much.
I echo that sentiment. Further discussion? Seeing, Mr. Bird?
Hey, I echo that. The same thing. Thank you for moving the topic and the conversation forward. I think it's important that we vote on this so, because it will let us see options. It's not approving a contract or a dollar amount, but we'll know what that might look like if we want to move forward with it. And so I think looking at those options doesn't hurt. So I'm in favor of that. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes seven zero. Before we move on to the next item, just want to clean up a bit of housekeeping. Mr. Buchanan, you had a motion you were going to.
I do, yes. This morning during the county executive's report, he reported that to us that he had received a eligible bid for the, for the crisis stabilization facility. And I would like to enter this motion. I move that the county council support the executive's decision to award the bid for the construction of the crisis stabilization facility with the understanding that the council will be supportive of a future budget supplemental of $1 million to be transferred to the project-based budget to provide the needed contingency funds for the project.
That's a motion.
Buchanan's motion, Mr. Donovan, second. Discussion?
I second that.
Ms. Brenner?
Yeah, I don't like the way that's worded. We, because I was a little apprehensive. This is an intent. We're just doing, it needs to say intent, but it's not, we're not saying we're supporting this money, period. And that does say that. I know a resolution doesn't have any force of law, but that's.
That's not even a resolution, it's just a motion.
For me about the money. And I just, I like the intent, but I'm not ready to.
What about a friendly amendment?
Give me a friendly, oh, you want me to give you one? Well, you, you read the thing. I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, let me see if I could make that work for you.
Yeah.
The understanding that the council's, the council's intent will be to be supportive.
Support the concept.
Yeah.
Okay.
Need you to read the whole thing again.
No, he could have all the rest of that, but not the specific.
You read the whole thing with your, with your amendment.
Okay. I move that the county council support the executive's decision to award the bid for the construction of the crisis stabilization facility with the understanding that the council intent will be supportive of a future budget supplemental of $1 million to be transferred to the project-based budget to provide the needed contingency funds for the project.
Second again. Ms. Brenner?
Not with, I don't think we should be putting an amount on it right now.
I won't, I got to stick with that because that's what, that's what the number is.
Mr. Bird?
The, I'm going to go on this one. Hundred percent respect for the executive and his decision-making skills and his rationale and logic behind this. This specific facility I really would like us to see. I think we need it a lot. But we've also run into some other roadblocks with it about how are we going to afford the operational expenses after the first couple of years? At this point in time, we, we don't. At this point in time, we, we don't know how we'll pay for continued operations, as well as a few other roadblocks. I think the, the jail assessment, if we move forward with that, could potentially provide a lot of really great data points about what we actually need when it comes to facilities such as this, and this is the perfect type of project for us to be able to do in a bad economy, where we could do it instead of $300 a square foot for maybe 150, save a lot of tax revenue, as well as create local jobs. I think there's a lot of value to that, and that would give us time to figure out maybe some of these other problems, so, yeah.
Brenna.
How about a friendly amendment that would say, "For an amount to be determined."
It's been determined. The bid's the bid, so you can't, you can't argue the math on a bid. It's, it's not to be determined.
Yeah, well, okay.
And just for clarity, Mr. Louse is asking for the contingency amount, which is normally 10%. Sudu.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to Mr. Bird's, while it's a good idea, one thing is, are you expecting a recession?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, and the second thing is, can we time it? Okay, it's three years from now, recession's going to happen, and we'll build our triage facility. I mean, the other thing is, is when recession happens, there is no money. Can we keep this $10 million into reserve? Because it has state money. We have very little money in it, there was a lot of money coming, and it's going to expire. I mean, it's, it's a great intention that we should do that, but you cannot take a specific project and say, "We're going to just save it in our pocket, and when the economy goes down, we'll do that." What do we do meantime about the people who are, who need services? People who we arrest and then bring to jail? We need a place to go, and it doesn't, I mean, it takes time to build these things, you know, it may take a year, year and a half to build it, so, I mean, while I, I like the idea that we should have some reserve fund, and we have been working on that, the county executive suggested a 10-year capital projects budget, and that is something that we should use this idea on that, that if we have a 10-year budget and we have money allocated in those projects, capital projects, and if the downturn comes and the jobs, and that's when we advance those things, or, or schedule them earlier than they were expecting to, to create more jobs or retain jobs, not even create, just retain jobs, but using that on this project, it seems pretty difficult.
Mrs. Donovan?
I just, to kind of put this in context, we, this is the top, one of the top priorities, having a crisis stabilization triage facility, one of the top priorities that came out of the Incarceration Reduction Prevention Task Force, and I've been sitting on the, whatever the subcommittee is for this facility for a couple of years, and we've been trying to get the deputy executive, you know, "Give us a date when we can break ground," and he's very diplomatically said, "Well, you know," and it, it's really, we push this back, it's been pushed back for, for a variety of reasons, and we can't delay it anymore, so I would urge, urge people to support this, and we, and we can't even really start the discussion about what we're going to do in terms of going to the voters with a proposal for jail funding until we do this, because this is one of the things we can say, "We heard what people said, they've said no twice, we want to do treatment services before we go back with a proposal for a jail," so it's critical that we get this, this contract going, and this is a way to accelerate it even by just a couple, few weeks, that's great.
So, further discussion? Ms. Brenna.
She had her hand up first.
Ms. Frazee.
All right, and from the listening tour they had for criminal justice, that's the one thing people said, is they wanted treatment, and I think this is the first step, and we just need to get moving on it.
Brenna.
Yeah, like I said, I totally support the intent, but I'm not comfortable with committing money before we commit mon, I mean, before we do something. This was brought up today, and I just don't think it's the right way to commit money, having somebody tell us something today that it's going to cost this, and it's a lot of money, so I'm going to abstain, because I do like the intent, but I don't like the wording.
Further discussion on the motion? Mr. Bird?
To me, a recession is kind of like gravity, right? I mean, at some point, you're going to come back down. Historically, it's every seven years that we see a recession. If you look at the Federal Reserve right now, they just lowered interest rates because they're worried about the economy continuing. We're in the longest, like, positive economy that we've had in decades, and so at some point, we will hit a recession, and it was more likely to be sooner rather than later. As far as federal funds being available, I don't think that anyone can point me to a single recession that our country's been in, in which the federal government and the state government did not dump billions, if not trillions of dollars into work on the ground, you know, pavement, like, get people to work projects like this, and so I would expect that a lot more federal money would be available for this type of project at this point in time. I've been very supportive of the project up to this point, but this is kind of the last part for me. We've gone out to bid, again, we had one contractor that showed up, a couple million or a million and a half, $2 million over what we thought it was going to be on an already inflated budget, and I just, I would prefer us to wait and get this done at a cheaper price. I will also say, there's a little bit of an irony there for me, because there was a private company that wanted to build a much larger facility in Waukam County, and a lot of people came forward that support this and testified against that, and the rationale was, "Well, that company can't find quality staff to hire and, and put to work there," and so I'm not sure how we'll find quality staff to hire if they weren't going to be able to, to do the same. So if we need the facility bad enough, why, why couldn't they have done the same thing for us without as much tax revenue? But, yeah, I like the project. I think it's a good project. I just think the timing and the funds are not ideal at this point, so.
Mr. Chair.
Sudu.
I just wanted to say that the private company was making it for profit, and they were going to make a much larger facility to make profit, and they needed a lot more number of people, and, and to do that. We have a facility we are proposing, which is just right size or even lower size for our community. Thirty-two beds, we need to, we, we have people right now who need those services today, and, and, and the private company looked at it, they looked, their numbers didn't work, they just moved on, but who cares about the people who are in our community who need those services? They, they were not coming here to provide services. They, yes, services was their business. It didn't make, pencil it out, they said, "Okay, we're going to go somewhere else," but those people are still our community. They are here. Who's going to look after them? If we do the same thing, that, okay, how much profit are we going to make? This is, these, these situations are not that, you know, that we can decide on that basis, so I think it, it has taken, I've been here five years since we have been talking about that we need a detox facility, we need a place where, when we arrest somebody, we don't take them to jail, we actually take them to a place where they can get a service, they can, they can have that and, and get back on their feet somehow, and, and now it's finally happening. We don't know the economy, how it's going to turn out next year, next two years from now, you know, there could be a tsunami tomorrow. So, I mean, we can't depend on those things to do work for our community, that, "Oh, well, let's wait till recession, and then we'll look after all the people with addictions." So I, I disagree. I think it's a great project, and, and we should, we should do it.
Ms. Brenna.
We're going to have any more discussion on this. This should have been brought up at the end of the meeting. There are people waiting on these issues that are already on the agenda, and everybody's just going on and on.
We can come back to it.
Or we could call a question.
Or we could just do, no.
Call a question, yes.
Well, there's more I'd like to say, but I don't want to hold these other things up, and I don't think it's fair.
Is there further discussion on the motion?
Yes, but I'm not, I'm not, yeah, but I'm not going to do it.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not rescheduling this for later, let's deal with.
Just at the end of the meeting.
We're going to dispose of the motion now.
There's only two things left. There's cherry point and one other thing after this.
And there are people sitting here been waiting for that.
Further discussion on the motion?
That's what happens.
Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
That passes six.
Excuse me, I'm abstaining.
Then, okay, that passes five to, five to one to one, with Bird opposed and Brenna abstaining. Next item up is a resolution for forwarding Cascadia Law Group's recommendations of Cherry Point Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Code amendments. And what we're talking about tonight, or the first part, is the resolution, and I think we do need to address the content of this, there's a minor change I have to bring to people's attention, which is the actual, what we're actually forwarding to the document, and that is that if you go to page, I'm just trying to find the page now, it's on the insurance section, I just wanted to draw this, bring this to people's attention. So it's on page 30 of this packet, which is online, starting at line 1,001, and then 1,005, there were some changes made by Cascadia regarding the insurance, which is different from what we voted on. So for clarity, I would like to entertain a motion, a motion to forward, a motion to accept the changes that Cascadia has made.
Accept the August 5th draft with changes.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Frazee, seconds, Mr. Donovan makes the motion, discussion on Cascadia's, or discussion on Cascadia's changes. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five to two with Brenna and Bird opposed, and then I do entertain a motion to forward the, for the resolution, to forward the now amended copy to the Planning Commission.
Move to approve the revised, altered it resolution, that is, whatever color we call this.
Peach.
Peach.
Got it wrong.
I didn't take a snap of whatever color that was, but I do.
You got to go see somebody.
I propose one change to the, the last, be it finally resolved, looks like I was eating lunch when I had mine, where it says, "We ask the Planning Commission to schedule one or more additional meetings in August or September, to delete August and December, and just put in fall." Its current scheduled meetings potentially constrains the Planning Commission's capacity to consider this matter. Council respectfully requests the Planning Commission to schedule one or more additional meetings in, and then just say "fall," instead of August or September, because they're not going to be doing it in August.
So in the fall.
The fall, or.
Okay, so the words "August" or "September" are replaced with "the fall." Your motion?
That is.
Who was the second, Ms. Frazee?
Second.
Do you accept the amendment? Do you accept the amendment, Ms. Frazee?
Accept the amendment.
Okay, it's been accepted. Further discussion on the resolution to forward this, to, forward the amended document we just amended now, to forward this to the Planning Commission? Ms. Brenna.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm not going to support it, and I think it's important that, you know, it sounds real good, what we're doing, but we're not an isolated little island, we're global. Everybody keeps saying, "Global climate, global change, global everything." Well, the more we do here to stifle good refining, the worse it's going to be, because we're going to be getting a lot of crap from, from Asia that's coming over here, acidic rain, acidic currents, acidic water, lots of acid in the water, and that's what's harming the salmon. That's harming a lot of things, and people can't see it, so they don't, you know, they think, "Oh, this is fine," but it's not fine, and if we're, we can't, it's kind of hypocritical to say we're global, but we're not.
Mr. Bird?
The, I think we, we missed a great opportunity here, and that opportunity, you know, there's the saying, I got all kinds of sayings today, by the way, in case you didn't notice, but you get more flies with honey than you get with yada, yada, right? Not quite verbatim, but close. I mean, we, we could have designed something that incentivized people to do what we felt was a better outcome, and then to get people on board with that. Instead, I mean, a good example of that would have been the biofuels and how we approached that, and can we make it easier for them to do those type of projects than oil projects or crude oil projects, and other, other similar situations, and we, we failed to do that, and I wish we would have done something similar. The other part of it is that, you know, whether it's like Sam-ish and coming out and talking to both sides and getting a compromise, or it's coming out and talking about the workforce training programs and the apprenticeship programs, and having both sides sit down at a table and, and come to a compromise and discuss the issues and hear and learn how everyone feels about it, or whether it's what we're talking about with the jail and have done with the jail, as far as going out and doing listening tours and giving people more than just three minutes to stand up and tell us why they disagree, but actually attempting to figure out what it is that they disagree with and what their points are and how we can work with them to do that, and to create something that's better. I really wish that we would have gone through that style of process of bringing everyone to the table and having an open dialogue versus forcing them through this traditional process that we use today, especially with a major issue like this one, so. Dan, I kept waiting for a three-minute buzzer to go off for some reason.
I can arrange that.
Okay.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five to two with Brenna and Bird opposed. Okay. Next item up is council appointments to boards, commissions, and committees, in this case, it's appointment of the Homeless Strategies West Group, representing a homeless advocate, AB 2019-429. We have a voting sheet.
Mr. Chair, I would nominate all applicants.
I'll nominate all applicants, and I just need to find my voting sheet.
You're looking, can I get clarity on this? Two questions I have is, are we only appointing one person? Is it one spot, or is there multiple spots?
It's a vacancy, one vacancy.
It is just one?
There's already some.
Okay, I just, I wasn't sure about the number, and then the second question I have is, it's the homeless advocate, is the person supposed to, at some point, been homeless or previous, is there like a requirement for that part of it? Barry?
I, I think it's, it's a combination, it could be a combination of things, it could be, has experienced, is experiencing, is, is, has a nexus with the issue, like a family member, or, it's just someone that's a real advocate that's not part of the nonprofit sector that, that's at the table as well. It would be like a citizen, a person on a regular advisory committee, but this is someone that's close to the issue of homelessness.
Ideally firsthand experience or something.
This is hard, this is really hard.
Okay.
Marcus, is this you? Okay, you always say Marcus D., so I was like, hmm.
I'm all those.
Okay.
I want to hear from, I want to hear from Marcus.
Oh, sorry, we're not, I'm sorry.
I move we let him speak.
Well, that's not really appropriate to allow one applicant to speak and not give.
He's been here for the whole meeting.
It's not appropriate to allow one applicant to speak without advertising.
He's not an applicant.
He's interested in all of it here, though, Barbara.
Okay, but, I'm sorry, if it's, are you an applicant?
No.
He's an applicant.
I am an applicant.
Yeah, and I don't think it's appropriate to allow one applicant to speak and not to evaluate, so.
I didn't realize he was an applicant.
All right.
I'm going to answer any questions, so keep looking.
Okay. So, Mr. Buchanan has nominated all, all seven members, and I guess you're going to call, call for a vote.
Oh, you were on there.
And I'm just, just before you do, I'm just trying to recognize, where's the voting sheet, because I just want to keep tally with you.
Yeah, just use page 637 and make a gizmo tally, Marcus.
Okay, Ms., Ms. Brown Davis.
Red Brown.
J.C. Mansfield.
Carol Frazee.
Mr. Marcus D., stood him. I'm not sure I said it right.
Barbara Brenner.
Marcus.
Tyler Bird. Tyler Bird.
Marcus.
Not Paul Sado.
Marcus.
Todd Donovan.
It is hard. You're all good.
Uh.
Against the grain, Todd.
No, I'm like.
Go against the grain.
J.C.'s one of your references?
We're going to start the Jeopardy song.
All right.
I think it's more complex than that.
Yeah, okay, Marcus. Mr. Stidham.
Barry Buchanan.
Marcus.
And then I missed Mr. Sado's vote.
Marcus.
Marcus, okay. I get six to one for Marcus. Thank you. All right.
Congratulations, Marcus. We'll see you tomorrow, or Friday morning.
Now can he come up and talk to us? Well, I am, but he's been sitting.
Well, well, that's why you get into this.
All right. Next item up is introduction items. Ms. Brenner moves approval for the introduction items, any discussion? Sorry, do I have a second?
Second.
Buchanan seconds for introduction, do I have any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item up is committee reports, natural resources, Mr. Donovan.
Aside from the two items that I discussed earlier, we, the two-stroke ordinance, which we just approved, and the SMP update, we did just consider moving the start times permanently to eight-thirty in the morning, and that was approved while some, kidding, I'm kidding. Uh, just those two items.
All right.
We, we started half an hour early, and it's really not easy.
In fact, the meeting went a lot smoother. All right, finance and administrative services, any others?
Yeah, we had a very lively discussion from design to last, and we were trying to find out ways that we can mitigate the smoke in case of fire in, in, in the jail. I mean, there are so many issues, different ways, and it was great that engineers were here, because we've earlier talked about using the HVAC system, but the HVAC system capacity of CFM means cubic feet of, per minute of air you can move is not sufficient enough to evacuate the, uh, smoke. The building walls have, they are hollow walls, and it's not possible to drill holes in there. If we do, we can actually remove those panels and bring new panels with holes in there, and, and then put new ducting in there. Then we talked about, I mean, you know, it just adds up the, how expensive it could be. And then we did talk about the holes made at the basement, and we found out that basement walls are solid concrete walls, they're not hollow walls, and they, and those things can be done. Then we talked about that what are the inflammable items in the cells which actually cause the smoke? Maybe we can just, if we can minimize the reason for smoke to happen, maybe we can have that issue solved. And they talked about a dilute system to flood it with water, and then, you know, of course, that is one of the things, and we can, the, what we found out to me, it was really surprising, the mattress. The mattress is the biggest inflammable item in the cell, and it causes the most smoke. And, and we are thinking of spending millions and millions of dollars. I, I think they can find a solution to the mattress, that's a few, few dollars, and not to change anything and not to have a smoke. Anyways, it was very interesting discussion, and we didn't reach any one conclusion or the other, and they are going to make a proposal to, to study all these items I discussed, and we will know, and they will give us a scope of study and the scope of money needed to do that study, so that we can make a more informed decision about that. But this topic is to be continued and have more discussions on that. So other than that, we had, um, county executives report, and, which was that, the first is the Berman Birch Way Road, which we approved the budget today, and that is going forward, because they have resolved the issues with the Lummy Tribe about the ancestral areas where, you know, they needed that permission for that. And they have received all forty-two right-of-ways, which were needed to complete that project, so that part has been completed, so it can go ahead. And on September sixth, in Birch Way, they are doing a groundbreaking ceremony for, for, to get that project started. The second thing was, we got a report on courthouse exterior, that work is progressing well, and there have been some more damage than what they thought, but it's progressing very well. And the third thing was, which we approved, the contract on triage center, that they got one bid for ten million dollars, which was short of the contingency amount, and the comparison was, in Island County, they're going to build a similar but smaller facility, is four hundred seventy-five dollars per square foot, and our bid looks like four hundred and twenty-five dollars per square foot. So, you know, these do, bids do vary, but it becomes a large amount, and the county executive needed assurance from the council that council would approve the contingency money, and, and that's the resolution we approved today. So that's about it.
Public Works.
Yeah, well, I first want to make a comment on what he just said about the exterior. The meeting before I got on the council, the county council that was there sat there and voted, just boom, to spend this money and do this whole courthouse restoration, making it this beautiful thing, and I told them at the time, it was like putting lipstick on a pig, and this place has been horrible ever since. It's leaked, it's had mold, it's had everything, and now we're spending a ton of money. I just think, you know, concepts can be great, but if you, you go ahead and commit money without knowing any of the details, why would they even go into any details after they already have our money? Anyway, that's just my little point of view. And on Public Works, we had a wonderful presentation by the Waukesha County Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and she sent us, I hope it went to everybody, I think it did, the slides that she showed, it was really amazing. And Joe Rutan was here from Public Works, and he, he, he's going to, as much as possible, make a lot of those projects fit in with all the road improvement work that's going to go on in our six-year, six-year road improvement plan. So that's great, because there's something, yeah, well, I just brought that together, okay. And then we had an update from the Health Department on activities related to housing, shelter, and domestic violence intervention treatment. That was, somebody brought that up about the, the, the tax rebate, you know, is something that, and I, I don't know if the person had the right impression of what we were doing, so I can't remember who brought it up. So I would say it's a great, it's a great opportunity for Waukesha County. I think that was it.
Criminal Justice?
Uh, yeah, we had one other item today. We had a presentation from the District Court Probation Administrator, Bruce, and he went over a lot of the programs that they're doing. In particular, one that garnered our interest was the text reminder system, and there was a lot of suggestions off this dais of, of suggestions that he may want to consider, so very productive session.
And I sent him a link to that website we discussed, so.
Hmm?
I sent him a link to the website that we discussed about automating the calendar function.
Oh, right.
Yep. Right. Uh, it was Criminal Justice, Special Committee of the Whole, and we had a discussion, very long and detailed discussion about Cascadia Law's recommendations, which we've just voted on. With that, there is other items, any other items, Mr. Buchanan, or updates? Ms. Frazee?
I just wanted to say, on Thursday, we had county staff employee appreciation, well, not appreciation, recognition, and council staff, Nadine Hansen, celebrated twenty-five years, so I wanted to thank her for her service. I believe Tyler Schroeder, were you fifteen? Fifteen, so congratulations, so thank you.
Mrs. Brenner?
Well, I wasn't going to say it, but I attended the one out at the Annex, and I'm usually the only one who attends that one, but it was really fun. And they, they're part of this community as much as the people downtown, so I was going to try to make both, but there was no way, so I had a great time. Rosie had a really good time, too. She's my dog. We had a wonderful time. And I just wanted to say something, because I thought maybe what I said sounded weird. When I say anti-gun, I'm not, I'm talking about legitimate hunters. When my husband and I were first together, we didn't really have any money, we lived in a leaky old trailer, and the best thing we had was the ability to hunt and, and have actual good protein. So I'm just saying, keep that in mind, please.
You work for Western. Can't you get those students to come up with how to, like, recycle bottles and the mattresses that don't catch on fire for us?
What?
Engineering technology, I'm so excited.
They have like that whole industrial design department up there, like, that they run the competitions on every year for, like, design something cool.
Sheriff has told us we can't use metal.
Not metal, but plastic, plastic bottles. Couldn't we figure out a way to turn all the?
Make a shiv out of a plastic bottle.
Well, that's nice. What is, what are you guys talking about?
We take T-shirts out of, like, plastic recycled these days. Why can't we make a mattress that doesn't catch on fire?
Nightfall.
If something happened.
Plastics burn too and create a lot of smoke, so plastic is not, not right.
Right. Something happened.
I don't know the mattress, it's been a jail.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, so, I don't know, you know, something very simple can work, but I have no idea right now.
Any other items or updates, Mr. Sado?
Yeah, yeah, well, sorry. I didn't see you two weeks ago, here, so just FYI, in case you didn't catch it, the, the city of Bellingham did come and give a presentation on annexation, and so I'm not sure if you're aware or not, but there was some interesting stuff there, it is on video, it's on the website, the Legislative Center, so if you didn't.
Any other updates, Mrs. Sado?
No.
Okay. Uh, if there's no other business for the council, we are adjourned, and please enjoy your summer.